Good evening, I'd like to call for new workshops. Uh, so we do a roll call for attendance when I say each board member, please say here. Ryan?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Tiffany?
Here.
Melinda?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
And Tony?
Here.
Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda is the international art trips request for summer of twenty twenty six. Uh, discussion and possible approval of the international class trip to Paris Rome in twenty twenty six, twenty seven school year. That was presented by Mr. Thompson in our last board meeting. Are there any questions on the international class trip proposal? Okay, if there's no questions, do I have a motion to approve the international class trip to Paris Rome in twenty twenty six, twenty seven school year?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this class trip.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff made a motion to approve the international class trip to Paris Rome in twenty twenty six, twenty seven school year, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
If anybody opposed, motion carried. The next thing on the agenda is the high school civics course offer, course offering. Discussion and possible approval of a new course option in civics for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Any questions on civics course offering? Do I have a motion to approve the civics course offering for the twenty five, twenty six school year?
Okay, motion.
Thank you, Tony, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Tony made a motion to approve the civics course for the twenty five, twenty six school year, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. The next item that we have on our agenda is the November bills listing. Discussion and possible approval of the monthly bills listing and receipts from the November twenty twenty four rate of the meeting. Are there any questions on the bills listing and receipts?
Yeah, I do. There is receipts for termy fees, um, based on contracts with, on recent, it's supposed to be on mileage for travel. It's listed in the bills.
Who wants your question?
It should be, right? No, that is, that's part of what the proposal would be. We don't charge for travel time, but mileage is a separate issue with everybody else's. On bills listing just says travel, doesn't say mileage. What's the question?
If it's accurate or not.
The bill is accurate. I did talk, followed up with questions of Dan and they had a couple a week or so ago and I thought that was, uh, I thought that was resolved. But fair question, I mean, there's, in any town is a question ever about any of those things. Absolutely welcome or called from Mr. Space or one of his office. Indeed.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I posed a question last board meeting, are we even had ever an explanation for when these are charged?
Meaning, uh, what, what's the question?
So like, we're not really given any details of those stuff. Like when we asked for details, then we were sent details, but like, can we get those ahead of time so we know?
What, uh, I can speak for our firm and, and it looks like your prior firm did the same thing. But for work, for example, it's done this month. At the end of the month, we review all of that and then it comes out within a week or two after that. There is a description with each of the entries that comes within the bills. That, that talks about was there a phone call, was there, you know, what we're working on in general. There will have some discussion in closed session tonight about some of those entries because there's some confidential things being worked on. So we'll talk about that tonight. So if you're asking me about one, can we know more about that clearly tonight and things I've worked on? And quite frankly, with some of the other permits we're working on for you too.
So I guess, when I'm asking them, so that would be retroactive? So as a board, aren't we supposed to know about some of that? I know some of it, I, I get it. But some of it, shouldn't we know before the bills listing, why the legal is called?
In order to pay the bill, you're saying in order to approve?
Because I approved the bill then, it's like we get the details. So shouldn't there be some thing where the board knows about it ahead of time?
I think the process is if you see the bills listing, if we get the information, we can outreach out to Andy and ask for details. Um, that's how it's always been previously and that's, I'm assuming unless we're changing some sort of by law, um, that's the way it is. So asking the question to Andy upfront would be very unofficial. So you know when we're passing the bills listing, like you're actually passing.
I get that ahead of, I, I get that, I get that piece, but it's still, shouldn't I know about it ahead of time? Before the details come up from Andy?
Okay, legal was contacted?
Right.
So I don't think, you know, since we've been working together, we've ever asked a question when legal was contacted for any other issue. Um, and I understand, um, Andy wanting to, to, to have, you know, good records of everything. But it's never happened before. Again, it's not in our bylaws that, you know, there's, there's thousands of things on this listing. If, if someone wants to find out every single time we spend money on the telephone, um, you know, expense, our, does the board get to know us? Is Dan gonna sit there and email us for every single expense? I, I don't think that's reasonable to make administration, you know, let the board know. That's why we have the board listening. Is that, I heard the bills listing is going to get them in advance, I mean, so that we can reach out and ask the questions about them.
Which is covered in like, from purchasing policy for what needs approval, what doesn't? Where we don't have any guardrails, um, what can't be contacted from termy fees, right?
I'll begin with now. But we actually do know ahead of time, like when we referenced legal before, one was for the case in changing, I don't wanna say the names, but wanting to be into our, um, school district that we knew about beforehand and the charges about beforehand. And then when we would talk as a discussion, Andy would literally say, well, I'll have to call legal on that. So we did always know ahead of time. That's, that's where I'm finding the confusion.
So I think it's different too because it's our president, reaching out to legal. Since I've been on the board, we've never had that. It's always been the superintendent that reached out. So I think that's different for myself anyway.
So I don't know if that's accurate since I've been in privy conversations or previous practice at our show. So we need to be very careful. Um, I would just say our bylaws are our bylaws. We reviewed this, this bylaw recently and none of this information or nothing that you're asking for right now was discussed at that time. And Tiffany, you had a good point in your last meetings, like we pass these things, but we just reviewed some of these bills that we're talking, every of these bylaws that we're talking about right now, the previous meeting. And this isn't on the agenda right now to talk about. We're talking about approving these bill listings. So I would say that we could push this to a future meeting to talk about it because I think, you know, yeah, maybe we should, if they were looking at it again, if there's concerns or questions about how it's done. It's, it's fair game. You can, you know, put in that request, but it hasn't been agendaized and we can't, we have to properly notify the public what we're talking about. And now we're talking about something we shouldn't be putting on the agenda. So we need to stick with the bill listings approval. That's what's on the agenda right now.
But some questions about the bill is?
But we're getting into why is and we have bylaws. We're, we're board members, we shall educate ourselves on what the bylaws are and there's your answer, right? Your answers are in the bylaws. The opportunity was brought to the board recently to change the bylaws and nobody said anything at that time. So I suggest, I suggest we just move on and, and stick with what Wisconsin, what we do must say. And we do not talk about things that are not on the agenda, right? So we either approve, vote to approve this bill listing or we don't. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill listing right now.
Jeff, can I ask one question quick?
Sure.
Do the mind fully clear at that point. Um, Dan, for that HTR project, I just wanted to reiterate, that was the last bill I told for that.
That was my.
Was one arm compliant on that?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, was there any more coming out for that high school child project at all?
No, I don't think that's on the motion.
Okay, I just want questions, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, a motion, just a minute, second.
Can I ask a question or go ahead?
It's, uh, whatever protocols, normally you would have a motion, a second, and then your discussion, but.
So I just have one more question for Dan, you may comment that, um, all of the bills get paid prior to board approval. So why would you bring these bills for us to approve if you're paying them already?
Well, the board needs to approve the expenditures. Um, we pay bills ahead of time to save money on finance charges and bank fees. Um, and we pay things electronically now, uh, through ACH processes in order to, um, avoid, and we've had issues in the past where we send a check and they call us and say, hey, we didn't get it. Um, then we look, make sure it wasn't, wasn't cashed, we'll send another one, well, the other one shows up, now we cashed both, now we credit. So it avoids things like that, so it's electronic payments for that. So for clarification, have these bills all been paid? The bills on the November list have been paid, yes. So, okay, so all the bills that were submitted then were paid? Correct. Okay, so now we're just formally voting approval right now? Okay, so there we go. And, and part of that, just if I, Dan, we're up and a little further I'm on, Dan says, you guys have to realize that our vendors and our companies aren't waiting thirty days like they used to. They don't wait fifteen days, some want ten days payment. So that's why those things are paid electronically and right away.
Okay, any other, uh, questions?
Tiffany has a second.
So I'll second the, uh, bills listing. So Jeff made a motion to approve the monthly bill listing receipt from November twentieth, twenty twenty four. I made a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, a roll call. Who opposes? Melinda?
Yeah.
Um, Mike?
I approve.
Okay, Tiffany?
Opposed.
And, uh, Ryan?
Opposed.
Jeff?
Approved.
And approved, and, uh, Tony?
Approved.
Okay, motion carried. Um, the next item that we have on the agenda is the Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolutions. Discussion and possible approval of WSB board resolutions for the State Education Convention in January twenty twenty five. Uh, Jeff is our delegate, you'd like to provide an update on that?
So Andy provided us yesterday with the update of what the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, um, resolutions are for this upcoming year. So just so the public understands, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards has a lobbying arm to it and they lobby on behalf of school boards. So every school, uh, district in the state of Wisconsin has to delegate. Can we, um, come together, discuss, um, these motions or these, um, resolutions? And it's a long, arduous process, a lot of amendments are made along the way. I'm gonna read off the, the resolutions so everyone's aware. Um, the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding, um, WSB supports the twenty of the recommendations by the bipartisan Blue Ribbon Commission of school funding, um, as published in January twenty nineteen. Um, there's, we can, Andy, we put some of the websites so the public can get this later. Um, I don't, I mean, I believe it was on our end, so I wanna condense some of this.
The one that on the website or the board docs?
Um, put it on board docs so the public can view this. Um, the second resolution is pathways and licensure for professionals. Um, it's, WSB supports reasonable efforts to provide pathways and licensure for teachers, candidates in some of those content areas where there is a shortage of licensed teachers. It goes on from there and gives a rationale on why they want us to support this. Then there's resolutions, another resolution is early literacy assessment for English learners. WSB supports early literacy assessment, screeners and diagnostics required. State law, if you provide it as English or EL students, home language in accordance with current best practices and assessment and structure for bilingual program students. The next resolution is decoupling public and private school funding created by WSB. Uh, supports separating state funding for voucher schools and intended charter schools for the, uh, schooling, along with. The next resolution, WSB, um, that is coming to a vote is consistent standards across all Wisconsin schools. All publicly funded schools, including private schools receiving voucher funding must have the exact same accountability reporting transparency standards and requirements. Next resolution, early childhood education funding and public-private partnerships. WSB supports the state-funded public school three K and full-day four K for all Wisconsin children. WSB also supports collaboration between public schools and other public agency and programs, private childcare providers of Wisconsin Institute of Higher Learning. Next one is the staff mental health. WSB supports legislation to fund statewide mental health initiatives for district staff in order to help improve staff mental health and increase retention rates. Next resolution, accountability in school report card standards. WSB supports timely revision of school accountability system to calculate school and district report cards overall scores based on student achievement only. Other data may be included for informational purposes, but not used in calculating the overall score. Consistent grade bands should be used rather than school building configuration. The next resolution is educational objectives. It's amending the existing resolution, education objectives as follows. WSB supports local initiatives that promote increased student academic achievement in key curricular areas. Includes science, math, language arts, social studies, foreign languages, and technology with the intent of ensuring, in addition to being this, with the intent of ensuring college career and workforce readiness in addition to supporting the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills. The next resolution is truancy. Amending existing resolution, truancy as follows. Um, the WSB supports legislation to clarify the responsibility of school, district, parents, students, court, law enforcement agencies, and in the enforcement truancy laws. The new, um, language we're entering with the goal to keeping students in school by using strength-based and evidence-based approaches that focus on families, schools, and community organizations. The next resolution is funding for school meal bet. WSB supports legislation that allocates monies to reverse, reverse districts for the cost of unpaid school meal bet if they are feeding all students without stigma. Next resolution is cybersecurity. WSB calls upon the legislature to allocate funding to school districts for cybersecurity measures, including but not limited to cybersecurity, software, hardware, upgrades, and training for personnel. So our board, um, room in presenting is this week. Um, and I would, I'm going to be asking that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting for all board members to read this through. We discuss this and then we go around with them and decide what, um, is right for our rights on school district. And as a representative, I will carry out what the full board, um, desires. So have you guys had a chance to read, reuse it? So that is what my ask would be. Um, does anybody have any questions?
How many of these do we pick to, to focus on?
So I'd agree all of them.
I, yeah, I've read all of them. I'm just kinda curious, do we focus on two or three or do we pick five or, or do we listen to priorities? Um, you know, I have some priority over, one over the others, so that's why I'm asking on, how these are picked or how we go about doing this, so.
Every one of these are going to be voted on. Two years ago, this was a two and a half hour, three hour, um, meeting in the last corner. So half of the, half of the resolutions were never taken out because there was so much discussion in time. What, and I just spoke at both of these in front of the delegates each year on several occasions about some of these that other board members felt strongly about. So I went to the floor and I spoke. Um, and so when we, next week or next week, we have our next meeting, what you should do is prioritize which ones are important to you and tell them. And then tell the rest of the board so we get your insight for every board member, pick up the ones that are most important that you believe. Um, are there, there's some on here that we are right for our district and there's some that are not right for our district, but I'm gonna reserve, um, my opinions for the whole group. Um, so I'll just give you an example. Um, last year they wanted to do, the two years ago, they wanted to do a free school launch for everybody. And the way the numbers came out is that the smaller school districts would end up losing in that, in that game. Understanding intent and people's heart being in the right place, but smaller school districts would end up having to ultimately pay more for that, uh, because of the way it was funded. So there was a board member that spoke up about it and I went to the floor to talk about it and it didn't pass, right? So the smaller school districts all banded together against the larger ones and, uh, voted it down. So read these, understand the consequences and plug in our rights down community. What are the, what is right for our community? And then we'll talk about it next week and then we can make a decision and we can look forward from that. And then I'll execute them in the, um, during the meeting at the State Education Conference in January.
Thank you for that.
All right, any other questions? All right, the next thing on the agenda is the district board goals. Uh, one of our board goals is to make sure that we have board development and training. And as most of you know, I have been working with Jim Macy and I'm trying to identify some training needs. Uh, some of the topics that I have been covering and reviewing, uh, in the last couple of months would be board governance, legal and regulatory responsibilities, financial oversight and budget, strategic planning and goal setting, communication and community engagement, board dynamics, evaluations for superintendent and district client assessments, since that, that is also another board goal. So what I was looking for was just, uh, options for discussion from the board, um, what your thoughts are. A couple of things, we do have the WSB. And the WSB has sent me training records on all board members. I will be sending this to everyone in an email. I'd like you to review for accuracy, whether or not, if there's any training courses that you attended that are not on there, uh, so let me know and I'm gonna make sure that's on there. Uh, we also have the WSB convention in January. As a reminder, if you wanna let everyone know, you can attend. Uh, other than that, I just open it up to the floor for options for board development, training, and when that would be something that everybody can participate in, whether that's in retreat or we have Jim come here, um, and do a, a training session, but she mentioned that, uh, he would offer some pre-trainings sessions for us. So I open that up to the floor for discussion. Anybody have any thoughts?
I'll go with him coming in and doing some trainings in January.
Okay.
I just got those two open for, for January.
January?
I agree.
Good job.
Good way to, good way to start the year off.
Okay, we need to utilize pre-trainings. Many more we won't be starting to the desert.
The only other thing that I had talked to about is we had discussed this a little earlier, um, and I gotta do some more research to, to envision myself. Um, doing the SAG evaluation service, uh, those eight that's provide those at free class, um, send a report card up to that. I think that'd be great to get up to our, our teachers and our SAG and kinda see where the morale's at and everybody's at and what's going on and just to get a feel cause, you know, I've never seen one of those here yet. You guys have a past, I have now, I can do them. Um, try to do something in the future to say, hey, where are we at here? Let's, let's everybody on board and see what we'll do about the district, so.
So that is gonna be on one of our agenda topics and one of our board goals. Uh, Mike is taking a look at that and getting some feedback from administration on that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Um, how about Tiffany? Any interest in more options for training?
Not really, I agree, people don't feel more legal fees, so if it's free, that's fine. Um, as far as time-wise, it's just gonna depend on what's decided on or what's put out there for dates.
Okay. And how about you, Ryan?
I, we've done trainings before, we've gone through them and seemingly we continue to go back on the same route. It's good for two months and then, um, it doesn't stick. Come out and just get lost, so.
Yeah, and I think it's, uh, important that if we continue to offer the trainings instead of once or twice a year, uh, it will save more. So I think that's something that we'll look at is making sure that we have ongoing sustainable training throughout the lead year. How about you, Tony?
I'll go ask, uh, Jim, and since you've been providing training services for some years, um, what would you find most beneficial for the smaller board like this?
Well, being new to your district, I've been just observing and then making comments in terms of structures of agendas and putting meeting notices together, communications. I think some work along those lines about the responsibilities of the, and I know your board is, your president's been working on it to have things more transparent, more open to the public, more discussions. I think some training along those lines about the newer aspects under the law, about the open meetings law. I think some board dynamics, training, coordination, communication with administration and board would be helpful. And I don't wanna suggest anything illegal or other stuff, but those are some observations, being new, that, that, that we've been working on already to, to, to make sure and avoid problems. I know people don't like legal expenses, but quite frankly, all of this has been geared for avoiding legal expenses and being preventative. This is what we spend a lot of time on, so I would hear training toward that, uh, for starters and then see where you wanna go from there. The other thing on legal fees, good, bad, or different, is you're gonna inherit some things that you just don't have a choice over sometimes. And I can also add, as long as you've mentioned that a couple of times, the bills are about half of the time that we put in as a team to assist you as we get up to speed for the district in terms of what they would be. I don't know if the bill looks great, but I can, I can assure you there about half of the time that, that we put in to help. Being new to the district and knowing that, that things are different, so, kind of happy to do that, right, right? And happy, as I offered in an email to the board that, that can assist with some pre-training, we will do that. So happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for that input. Anybody else wanna add anything else?
Just like I said, there's, uh, and we all know if we can put in WSB training, there's, there's virtual training that goes on throughout the month. There's, uh, regional training, there's, it's summer, um, training, following spring training in our regions. The recent one, because that's on, I don't understand. Um, and it, that helps reinforce, um, in the community, what, what our roles are, who we're, why we're here. Um, and it's really important, you need to network with other different school board members from all across the state. And, um, they talk about, you know, they ask a lot of really creative questions that.
And they talk about, you know, they ask a lot of really great questions that are very helpful, and you can learn from other board members too. So, I, I would just encourage us to continue to use WISB as well.
Okay, thank you. The next item that we have on the agenda, the personnel reports, Andy said something to present.
Yeah, before you, the only thing we do have is Diane Denny, our school nutrition leader, is planning on retiring in December of twenty, twenty twenty-four. You know, we will definitely send out a letter to her. You don't need to approve this because she's an hourly staff member, and I can approve those by policy. But from the board, you know, very nice, the time she's put in, I know she's gonna be missed, she's been a valuable member of our team. And it's very important, right? Lunch, we almost think academics, but boy, kids need lunch. They need to be fed because they're burning up the calories, so it's very important, and she does a good job.
Okay. So, we don't need to take caution on that, Andy?
You do that.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the policies for reviewing by the board. So, I had asked Andy to add the policies for the update on the thirty-three dot two technical corrections. These are already approved by Andy, but I haven't had them on here for transparency with the public, so they understand that we have policies, and which policies would have technical corrections, which would be more grammar, some wording issues. But does anyone have any questions about the technical grammar corrections wording that were changed for thirty-three dash two from EOLA? Okay, if there are any questions, then our next policy would be discussion and possible approval for policy five-one-one-three, open enrollment program first read, and Andy will present that.
It's part of, a part of our four K, four day program next year. We're looking through our policies. Ms. Nelson and I realized that we didn't have any provisions in there for students with siblings that already attend our school. So, we wanted to make preference for those students, that if they have siblings already enrolled in our school district, that we would give preference to them attending our school. So, it was, I'm asking that here. We added green, I thought.
Yeah, I didn't see the green, that was kind of a question.
Full-time open enrollment, letter A, and I'm reading letters A, B, C. I agree, it's not the wording, but it's just the
Right, establishing current enrollment numbers for enrollment availability versus the board showing who the following has a guaranteed open enrollment approval, students attending the district for whom tuition is paid, all currently attending students, all siblings of currently attending students. So, we put in C in there. It is green, if you really look at it, it's, it's hard to see it. I just noticed it myself. Do you see C as green? Did you guys all see that, A, B, and C?
No color line.
Yes.
I assumed I would call it that too, because I, I was missing it.
I must be calling one, because I think
It is, it is, if you look at it, the letters, just the letters are A, B, and C.
So, you added C?
A, B, and C would be new language, we made sure we put that in there. So, it's spelled out in there for the policy. So, can, can everybody, you can see that the A, you can see their green now. So, that's what we'd be asking you to approve. This would, you know, with this new four K program, we're expecting some more students hopefully, and, you know, rightfully so. If students or families are already enrolled in our district, we'd want to give preference in our position as an administration to those siblings.
Okay.
So, that's, that's how it would be, if you guys approve it, obviously, first read. So, we'd like to bring this back to you next week, Wednesday, for you to look at it and to possibly do it.
So, Andy, and that also the application for states further down.
Yep.
So, then that's where it's signal lined out, but still, when the student selected in the random, so if a family is, so for example, just to help me clarify it, is if family chooses to open enroll, one student gets selected, it does not mean that the other two would come along with, unless it was they chose to open enroll one.
They
The following year, it would get.
Right.
Okay. So, just because one will get selected during that year's evaluation of states, doesn't mean that all will get that.
Right. And you, you have to remember now, in January becomes your open enrollment cap numbers, receipts. We put a cap number on all of our seats, whatever the regular or special is, okay? So, we have to have the little seats in there, but yes, to your question, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy on policy five-one-one-three? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the policy five-one-one-three?
No, that was just first read.
So, I'm not gonna do it for the first read?
No, we'll bring it back to you next week, Wednesday.
Thank you for that question. All right, the next policy that we're looking at is the discussion and possible approval for policies zero-one-six-four meetings. This is considered a second meeting on streaming board meetings virtually. Anybody have any questions about that?
What are we doing, or what have we put in place for technology or any of that stuff?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the thing is, is we need to approve the policy and allow for the administration, since it's their job to determine how the guidelines need to be put together. So, whether they want to purchase an owl or archive any of the information that needs to be handled through administration. I know we've talked about it as a board, but this has been on the agenda since July, and I'd like to, you know, if we're going to agree to this policy, make a motion to either approve or not approve, and then allow for administration to carry out the, the process for how to handle streaming for the ends online.
If I remember correctly, the last time, I think Andy, that, that he put in regards to the cost of it, and that we really didn't have any big of the budget set up for it, correct?
It was not necessarily when we developed the budget, so, no.
Yeah, so I, I
I should say, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So, that's a good thing you asked that, because I have an anonymous person that contacted me this week that is donating an owl. He spent about eight, nine hundred dollars, he doesn't want me to share the name. So, they would be willing to give that owl to the district in order for us to stream our board meetings online.
And I thought that at the last meeting, we were going to have Cory Joffe first come in. So, she's now on board, that we can do that in form of approval.
So, Andy, I would default to you, you, Cory's working for, for Asana and Zeta, have you had any conversations?
Cory started last week, we have talked to him a little bit about this, but right now he is focusing on giving our student information system up for testing, which starts in January, which is a need right now for us greatly, because we do have a few areas that we're trying to clean up in our student information system, and so we can allow for testing in January with our students. So, that's kind of taken the, the front seat of this. The owl, very greatly, whoever appreci, or we're very appreciative, whoever donated the owl. I think when we last talked as a board, Tony said something about having a, correct, I don't remember, told me a, some type of mic, an already focused mic. So, there are a couple of different solutions you can use when you want to have a virtual meeting. You can, for instance, like we've done before, you can use a laptop. It's not preferred, because there are quality issues, but you could use an email or something equivalent that provides a combination of video and audio. Or you can use, if video isn't in the budget, you can just buy a little small mic arrays. It has a radius pickup of, of about fifteen feet in each direction, so it easily would pick, pick up all of the sound here. And just shoot out audio. And, and those are only anywhere from a hundred, two hundred, maybe five hundred, six hundred dollars, depending on the manufacturer of that, so. And there's a couple of different ways to, to have a virtual meeting, or technically a hybrid meeting, right? So, we would be use, it would be a hybrid meeting that we would be conducting. Hybrid meetings are a type of virtual meeting where you are combining in-person audience along with distant attendees. And so, we use Google Meet, and that's our, our software that we use to, if we were to have virtual meetings, that would be the solution we're using. Well, it would depend upon what Cory would come up with the solution, but yeah, there's multiple ways to get information out from them.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, two things, so the, the owl is a plug and play system, it needs to be positioned right, and it has a, a radius that picks up the camera throughout the room, so. It has an eighteen foot radius, which would cover this room unless you're standing on the very edges. The secondary, the ancillary stuff you want to create, one mic arrays and stuff, they're very, very expensive, like Tony said, a couple hundred bucks, if you want to add some mics. But I think the, the whole purpose of us here is to, to vote this policy in, and then we hired a very capable IT person to run that department. We put it in his hand and then let him take care of it from there. We just need to vote whether we're gonna do this or not, if you want to stream meetings or you don't. We're not supposed to get involved in the operational side, we need to trust that we have the staff in place that can figure this out, and I think we get caught in the weeds when we're, when we're doing this. So, I think what, this has been on our agenda forever, and by, by bylaws, it seems to stand our agenda till we take it off the ballot, otherwise it's supposed to be on every agenda we've been on, so.
Also, we realized our next board meeting is next week. We vote this in. And we're not saying that we're out of the court, the presentation, right, we're just, we're hoping this is in the past. I'm not saying that we're recording, but we were, it's a live stream, which is what's in here. And we would have to be readily capable of doing that effective next week, Wednesday.
Well, my next question, Rain, was gonna say, after everybody discussing, when would be a feasible time if this gets approved, maybe more like a January starting time?
But then you have a policy saying that we're doing it though. That's my problem. You have the policy saying that we're doing virtual meetings, but now you're having to have virtual meetings until January. The policies are what we are supposed to go by. So, if it says that we're doing virtual meetings, you should be doing virtual meetings.
So, yeah, we're gonna pass the policy to the, if the, if the administration isn't ready to enroll by next week, they get a pass, because just like Andy explained, this guy is, is new, he's focusing on something else.
That's not a gray area, let's just say that we're gonna get a pass.
I, I, look, if we pass this, I would love to see it, that if I don't by next week, you can plug it, literally plug it in, and it does, you set it up to the system you want to use. It works with Teams, it works with Google Meet, it works with YouTube, it works a whole variety of different things. It is kind of one more process to hook this thing up. I'm sure this IT gentleman is capable of doing it. I believe that we have gone way too long without streaming our meetings, and I would like to get this thing taken care of. We have a donation from someone in the public, if new mic arrays need to happen, we can figure that out, I feel personally done.
So, so
No, I don't have a person, but I can have a Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to, so when Andy asked about the, the, we now need an extra mic if you will, a mic array. It, it has a very credible multi-mic pickup, however, you can purchase the, an extender mic if you will, so it increases the radius that it's moving, or it can pick up differently. And so, that's, and that's, you don't have to buy it, it, it is several hundred dollars for one of those. But it just increases the, the area that, that owl will be able to sound. Tony, do we need an iPad or anything? It connects via a USB connection on your laptop. And so, you will, depending on where it's placed, you, we might have to purchase, to be honest, just being a moment here. You might have to buy an extender, it'll be around about fifty or sixty bucks. You're gonna have to buy some type of, of electrical outlet and something to cover the cable, you know, it's gonna be another fifty or sixty bucks, and and so, you know, there might be another hundred dollars or whatever, a hundred and fifty bucks, we might have to to spend to make it work right, and just little ancillary ones. So, we take them all. You have a question?
Okay, hang on.
So, who is adding us?
That's an administrative question, administrative two questions, again.
Then if we have the new IT person, have another person add all of the meetings?
Well, it, it, maybe it's not that personal, Andy gets to decide, so.
I just don't agree with approving a policy when we don't have, again, anything set in place.
Well, we're trying to get something set in place right now, if anything, we can approve a policy and do logistics later. I mean, when we had COVID, there was no owl, there was absolutely nothing, no connectivity, other than the laptop had a president advantage, and I'd be more than happy to ban into the laptop for next week's meeting, if the, if the policy goes through, and figure out the logistics later. We've had this on the agenda since July, and we're still trying to figure out the logistics of this. It's real, it should be a real simple fix, whether we either approve it or we don't approve it.
I have a motion to approve.
Yes.
I have a question.
We have a motion that's able to prove by Mike, and we have a second by Jeff. Mike made a motion to approve the policy for zero-one-six-four meetings to add streams for meetings. Seconded by Jeff, all of them in favor.
I have to go for discussion at this point.
There's a motion on the table, Rain, anybody opposed? Is there anybody opposed? If you want to oppose, Rain, you can.
Oppose.
Okay, motion carried. All right, the next thing on the agenda would be Yeah, we're going. Yeah, I Okay, I didn't hear Jeff. Sorry, so we can do a roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes, true.
Tony?
Yep.
Melinda?
No, I shouldn't be forced to make, forced to
Yes or no, Melinda?
Or vote when people say motions after discussion is
Rain? Rain?
No.
Angela, yes? Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. All right, the next thing that we have on the agenda is the executive session, and the board of education, a motion, we may be carrying in the full session under one or more of the exemptions provided in section nineteen point eight-five-one, which contains the statutes for the following, considering employment promotion compensation of performance evaluation data of any public employee over which government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five and one C, personal investigation matter. At this time, I ask to make a motion to go into the executive session. Do I have a second?
I'll sign it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. At this time, we're gonna do a roll call vote to go into an executive session, Rain?
No.
Tony?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tiffany?
No.
Melinda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angela, yes?
Let me note that that's a report I'm gonna give in closed session, you have another agenda item that says possible action after that meeting, I'm not anticipating any action from the board or anything that I report on that's gonna take action, just so people know that. So, if, if people were waiting for action later, there's nothing I'm gonna recommend in that regard for that issue. I would anticipate after your session, you would simply come up to adjourn, okay, just for everybody's comfort.
Okay, so, at this time, I would add
Did you, did you check the book?
I did, yeah. So, at this time, I want to ask the administration of the board to leave, thank you for attending, and we'll go